And we will begin immediately with the Urbana City Council meeting as soon as the clerk's office is ready.
Ready.
Okay, could you please call this meeting to order? Well, I'll call it to order. Could you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Wu.
Here.
Mr. Sacks.
Here.
Ms. Hershey.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Colebrook.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here. We have a motion for approval of minutes from the March 8th, March 22nd, and which are two meetings and the April 5th public hearing.
I'm going to move approval of minutes.
I'll second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Sharice. Are there any corrections? Okay, well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Sacks.
Yes.
Ms. Hershey.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up are presentations and public input. First item is a presentation by Scott Dossett and Tony Alagretti, and it's on the elimination of CPRB membership restrictions based on felony convictions. And I would ask if Mayor Pro Tem Dennis Roberts could chair, take over the chair for a few minutes. I need to sign a document.
Sure, okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a presentation. Are we ready for that presentation?
Oh, yes, we're ready. It's mostly just talking points. It's not really a PowerPoint of any sort.
However, you want to do it.
Okay, just for all who don't know, my name is Tony Alagretti and one of the members of the CPRB. I know Mr. Dossett was going to join via phone. I don't know if he's here yet or not.
He has, he has not joined yet.
Okay. Either way, the resolution that we passed out of our board dealt with removing Section 19-22C of the CPRB ordinance, which would remove the requirement that a person, in order to serve on the board, not have a criminal felony conviction or plea to serve. We are requesting that that be removed from the ordinance. I can answer questions that the council may have about why we're seeking that. Generally, I think it seeks to, or by removing Section C, it really helps to fulfill the goal of Section D, which would allow the mayor to further endeavor to reflect the community to serve on the board. As the council is probably well aware, interactions with the criminal legal system don't span equally across all races, classes, genders, ages. And so having a felony conviction also would unequally impact different communities or different sub-communities in our inner banner. There are a number of reasons why people may decide to plead to a felony conviction. A number of those have nothing to do with their culpability to the offense. Also, we believe that the blanket ban on all felonies is very restrictive. There are a number of felonies that are nonviolent that someone can be convicted of. Felony traffic conviction for driving on a suspended license is one offense. There are a number of prior offenses that someone can be elevated to a felony conviction, and really, that's all dependent on what the state's attorney decides to charge. And that varies from county to county, state to state. We think it'd be more equitable to remove that requirement for someone to serve on the board. Again, modifying the ordinance to remove Section C doesn't remove any sort of control that the mayor has to appoint people to the board. So we believe there's still plenty of ability for the mayor and the others who are deciding who to put on the board to make the proper call if someone with a prior, with a felony conviction were to apply to be on board. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
And I see that Scott Dossett's now currently also online. Yes, Mayor.
I'm back, so I can take back the meeting. Thank you very much.
Certainly.
Thank you. So any questions for either of the presenters? Mary Alice and then Bill.
So in spirit, I'm in support of this change. I had two questions. I watched the CPRB last meeting, and I think there was a discussion in terms of how to change the ordinance, and it seemed to me that the idea was to come with a group of changes and not one-offs. So it sounds to me like right now the board is discussing all of the different particulars, and then is the intent of the board to give us an updated document with everything that you've kind of come to an agreement with.
Scott, if you want to take that one, I know we had discussed doing that.
Yeah, can you hear me, Tony?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Hello, everyone. Yeah, I don't remember that conversation, Mary Alice. I'm sorry. I think what we understand is that there is sort of a bank of necessary changes to the ordinance. And then, you know, we're entering with this suggestion here to counsel into, you know, you might call them sort of optional sort of changes to the ordinance. It was, it was my intention when I made the motion to pass this forward to add the felony exclusion to the bank that I know Carolyn Mitten and Lamond are aware of and are working on for future presentation to counsel in the context of an ordinance rewrite.
Okay, and then my second question had to do, I believe, and somebody correct me if I'm incorrect. I think that when CPRB was originally formed, there was some kind of rider that was put on the FOP's contract. And so I'm wondering if this is in conflict with anything that was in that contract.
Well, well, for certain, there are at least one or two other things that have come up in conversation and have been discussed at the board that are, that are in conflict with the FOP. And in fact, knowing that that agreement is soon to be negotiated, or maybe in the middle of negotiation now, was one of the reasons that it seemed as if this was an opportune time to offer this so that, you know, city staff and the union could negotiate those terms.
There is a side letter specifically related to this topic in the FOP contract. So yes, you're right.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Any other questions? Bill.
Yeah, that was pretty much my question. I think we've had the votes on council up to eliminate this for at least eight years. I think the side letter to FOP contract has been definitely a bind. If, if I was an officer thinking about negotiating that part, I might counteroffer, well, if we allow felons or convicted felons or former felons on the CPRB, can we also have retired police officers or people that have been involved in law enforcement? Because that's currently prohibited too, if I remember right. Did you guys talk about that at all, and how would you feel about that if we allowed both?
Yeah, we did. Go ahead, go ahead, Tony.
Thanks, Scott. Yeah, we did discuss that, and we felt, and I think there was some general agreement that, you know, the officer's position or side of any one of these complaints is going to be presented by the police that are presenting at any particular complaint. You know, we didn't think it was necessary to remove that, that ban on law enforcement from serving on the board because it is a, it's a citizens' police review board. You know, if you have the police reviewing the police, we felt that it wouldn't really give any credence or lend any credence to the board, or it may diminish the integrity of the board or views from the community that if you are just going to have another internal police review board, in effect, that, you know, it takes away from what the board is supposed to do. So we did not think that removing both at the same time was, was necessary. The Section C, removing the felony conviction, I think it's a false dichotomy that, you know, felons on the board and police on the board, removing those, those two is somehow removing two diametrically opposed groups of people. If that answers the question. Again, it's not cops and robbers, you know, when it comes down to putting people on board.
Thinking from a negotiating standpoint, might, what might be possible. Thanks.
Any other questions? Sharice.
So when you're thinking about, with the, are there particular felonies that you're thinking about for certain that, like, is there going to be a list, or are you, how, how is that going to be organized? Or are listed, or is it all felonies, or is it people who have done their time? And, you know, have been done their probation or parole or whatever? I mean, that's what I mean, because you, I don't know if you have an idea of any particular felonies that, like you said, a lot of things can be raised to a felony that's maybe nonviolent or anything like that, so.
Sure, we, we had just, the, what we had proposed was just removing that section. We didn't get into particular felonies or discussing, yeah, do we want to draw a line at violent felonies or forcible felonies? You know, that, that, that may be something that comes up, as Mr. Brown discussed with negotiating with the FOP about, you know, where, where this, you know, where the chips end up falling. You know, just speaking for myself, I could see that, that being a point of contention about, you know, the blanket ban and then turning it over into a blanket removal, you know, there's, there's a number of shades of gray that, that perhaps this, this ends up coming to. But all of, all the CPRB did was, was propose to bring this before the council to remove Section C. We thought that was the cleanest thing to do.
Yeah, I might just add that, you know, this is all predicated on the fact that, you know, the mayor uses his or her judgment in terms of appointments to the board. And we talked a little bit about classification of felonies in the meeting, but not a lot. But my, my, what I suspect is that someone who had committed a violent felony wouldn't, you know, they might apply, but probably wouldn't pass muster through the interview process.
The other thing, I mean, if we're talking about somebody who's been convicted of a serious felony, and it's likely to be sentenced to serve, you know, very, a considerable amount of time behind bars and permanent corrections, you know, that person who comes out on the other end is definitely not the same person who went in. And that insight or view of that person, the CPRB doesn't necessarily think it's going to be diminished just because they have served, been convicted and served time for a criminal offense. You know, they've, the, the whole idea is to be restored and rehabilitated and ready to serve and maybe a productive member of society. And if we, you know, further continue to treat people with felony convictions as, you know, modern day Scarlet Letter holders, then they're never going to really be able to, to be reintegrated into society and serving on a, a board like this or being, you know, engaged in civics of their, their community is something that shouldn't be prevented just because they've been convicted of a felony.
Yeah, that's well said, Tony. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, well, this will be obviously part of discussions at CPRB going forward, and eventually you'll see some recommendations for changes to the ordinance. Bill Colebrook.
I don't have a question, but I've got a comment.
Well, this, I'm going to, I'm going to remind folks that this is a time for questions for the presenters. And then if we want to add this for further discussion on an agenda, we can put that on another agenda, but
Okay.
this isn't a time for council discussion or commentary. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much, Scott and Tony.
All right.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
We'll move on to public input. If you'd like to address the council, please raise your hand. And first up is Tracy Chong.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Tracy Chong. First up, I would like to say that I am in support of removing the no criminal felony requirement for serving on the CPRB. People with close encounters with the criminal legal system, the ones who would provide the diversity and experience needed on, on the board. And I think what's, what you guys fail, fail to mention or discuss is that it is, this requirement is also discriminatory and in violation of the Urbana human rights ordinance. And in regards to Bill Brown's comments about allowing an ex-police officer, I mentioned it during the CPRB meeting, and I'll mention it again here. An ex-police officer and even a retired, retired police officer would still have ties to the police department. His colleagues will be there, people who he worked with, with for years, 20 years, would still be there. And I don't know about you guys, but sometimes we spend so much time at work that our colleagues are like our second family. I don't think that just because a police officer is retired, those ties and loyalty will be cut, and there will most likely be an unsymmetrical bias. Now, next up, I was thoroughly disappointed at last week's discussion of city council's violation of the Open Meetings Act. I think this discussion was a perfect example of council not taking responsibility, not admitting mistakes, not learning from mistakes, refusing to apologize, not wanting to address difficult issues, and it actually was a downright dishonest conversation. No one addressed the issue of city administrator Carol Mitten retaliating against the complainants by publishing their email and personal home addresses. There was no discussion of how Urbana's attorney and ethics officer could be so dishonest in his legal advice just to support the restrictions Mayor Marlin wanted. Mayor Marlin herself refused to comment, even though she was responsible for these speech restrictions and ordinance. You guys, city council members, failed to address the actual issues at hand, instead asking irrelevant issues like discussing vulgarities, profane language, nudity, et cetera. You guys act like you don't know the actual reason Mayor Marlin wanted these restrictions. It was never about vulgar or profane language. It was about not wanting to hear criticism and critical comments about staff and public officials. You guys deprived me of my right to speak. You are found in violation of the state statute, and all you can say is that it is a useful experience. Maybe you can elaborate what was useful about it. That would at least be useful. You would not even discuss what we learned from this incident and how we can assure that this would not happen again in the future. I also think that council should consider removing this section of the ordinance as Mayor Marlin's intention for the ordinance, which was to silence the public from making critical comments, are pretty despicable in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will comment on this. We are advised by our legal counsel not to discuss this particular topic as it is the subject of an ongoing litigation, and we do not discuss ongoing litigation. Thank you. Next up is Eddie Pratt Jr.
Hi, can you hear me clear?
Yes, we can.
Great, great, great. Well, my hope that everyone is safe on this, this evening. This lovely evening here in Urbana. So I've been listening, and I have to say that I, I disagree with Bill Brown's assessment about having a member of the police, be it current or former, on the public review board. See, I have a firm belief that if we are going to reach a actual post-racial society in America, and in particularly in this community, one of the things that we cannot be doing is compromising with the same systems that have brought us here in the first place. So I disagree with having a person who is a former police officer on the police review board because that is a direct, a direct conflict of interest. For the same reasons that Ms. Chong so eloquently put out there, we cannot expect someone who was in league with these people, who were in union with these people to be unbiased when it comes to addressing police brutality, when they in fact were a part of the same set of people who began these actions in the first place. I thoroughly support taking off the whole idea of a background check being needed to, to serve on these boards. In fact, I implore for the opposite. I would think that in order to find a true level of fairness, you would want to put people on that board who have been more affected by injustice or in that, or for the sake of stability, just the justice department to be the ones who are on this board, because who would be more centered? Someone who is outside the system, who only has maybe propaganda to lean on to tell them about what is right or wrong, or those who are right in the thick of it. So I side with the people. As a matter of fact, no, I don't like to put myself out there. Somebody like, exactly like me is somebody that you would want. Someone who doesn't have a felony, who has been, been through the police system, who has been arrested, but is not a felon. But even if they were a felon, as a matter of fact, I would think that would make them more qualified than less. So in closing, absolutely, you would want someone who has been through the wringer to tell you exactly what happens within it, to tell you if there is implicit bias at work or not, as if you didn't have all the stats and all the data that would suggest that implicit bias has been working in our system all along, which it has, and which everyone on this call probably knows. So as far as that's concerned, as far as this whole talk is concerned, I see it as purely reactive. We know what needs to change. And as far as the public review board is concerned, having police on it would destroy the exact and utter purpose for which it was founded. I yield the rest of my time.
You're muted.
Next up is Alan Maxxerab.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for putting the clock up. So I want my comment tonight, although I wish that I could talk about additional topics with confidence. I want my topic tonight to be narrow. So I'm going to emphasize the resolution that you have before you tonight on utility shut-offs and to try to drive home the severity and the clarity behind this issue. Let's start with the severity. I am not somebody who takes pandemic safety lightly, as you probably have guessed by now. I'm also not somebody who travels for the fun of it, which I guess now you know. Despite that, this weekend, to prepare for the mass scale safety issue we are facing, we printed over 10,000 handbills and distributed them in, going south to north, Pena, Springfield, Decatur, Champaign-Urbana, Bloomington-Normal, Havana, Pekin, Peoria, Joliet, and Waukegan just over this weekend. Activists there are in the process of distributing that literature to households that are vulnerable. Again, this is not recreational. This is not, the literature isn't even branded where they know the organizations that are doing this. This is trying to be as clear as possible to the people most in need and putting those handbills as close to those folks as we can. So when it comes to this resolution, there was a discussion last week about means testing and whether or not that needed to be there. So I wanted to address that specifically because, again, this is severe. We had a moratorium that was means tested for power shut-offs announced on September 22nd. Nine weeks after that, over 81,000 households were disconnected, and we had an over 150% increase in our daily coronavirus cases and an over 82% increase in the daily deaths from coronavirus, daily stats, not even cumulative, daily. So what stopped that conclusively was the November moratorium, which for power utility shut-offs for non-payment did not have any means testing. It was unconditional. And we went from literally over 10,000 shut-offs in a month to one for power utilities. And across those three months, we saw a total of four shut-offs from two corporations that were supposed to not do any. One was from Commonwealth Edison, and one each month was from Ameren, Illinois, in each region of Illinois. This is not a coincidence. So again, to emphasize this point, this is hardly ideological. This is empirical. The facts and the data say that when we put a means test that was well-meaning for utility protections, it was disastrous. And the policy adopted by the Illinois Commerce Commission is weaker than the policy we had in place back in September. And the caseload has been over 2,000 cases a day for over two weeks straight already. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next up is Emily Close.
Good evening, Mayor Marlin and council members. My name is Emily Close. Tonight, you will vote to walk back the ordinance you enacted October 12th, the ordinance that abridged the First Amendment rights of citizens who tried to address the selected body. And although the mayor just said that your legal counsel advised you not to talk about your Omaha violations because of pending litigation, I operate, I operate under no such restrictions, so I'll get right to it. Good explanations for your bad behavior were elusive during last Monday's council meeting. Instead, two council members offered excuses, evasive non-answers, and head-scratching diversions about nudity and yelling in a kindergarten-level effort to avoid accountability. The mayor, when asked to explain why she led, quote, "the full charge," end of quote, "to censor and silence the perceived dissenters, critics, and all-around meanies trying to address her in the council," offered up these words, quote, "I have nothing more to say," end of quote. Indeed, Mayor and Council, the damage is done. You tarnish your own legacy and reputation as an outgoing public body. You invited the critical reactions that come from engaging in such embarrassing and questionable conduct. You are the subject of news and blog articles that point out your tenuous grasp of the First Amendment and your poorly thought-out efforts to punish citizens who wish to be heard. thought out efforts to punish citizens who wish to be heard. You were the ones who walked eyes wide open into this swirling, swirling hot mess that earned you a firm and pointed rebuke from Illinois Public Access Counselor. In a few weeks, five new council members will be seated. With some luck, there will be some thinkers and some questioners among the new group, some council members who will take the long view, who will ask themselves and each other whether common sense, integrity, and the rule of law will rule the day and support any planned course of action they embark upon. Urbana needs council members who will ask whether it's the proper role of government to wage war on its citizens through heavy-handed, ill-advised, misguided, illicit, and vindictive restrictions on their speech. Do better, Urbana. Much, much better. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next up is Sarah Nixon.
Hello, City Council. This is Sarah Nixon. I would first like to echo the comments made this evening by Ms. Tracy Chong and by Mr. Eddie Pratt with regard to the CPRB stance, the proposal brought forward by Mr. Allegrati and um his colleague on that board. I think they articulated better than I could the reasons for supporting that move, that amendment. I also joined them in shock at at some of the the comments made by city council members which conveyed a priority concern for the the FOP. A concern to placate the FOP, a concern to ruffle or smooth ruffled feathers and offer potential bargaining chips. I think all of that was entirely inappropriate and quite shameful, honestly, as Mr. Allegrati pointed out in response. The CPRB is a civilian police review board. It is not an internal review mechanism, which we have seen over and over, amounts to a process where the police look at themselves for passing a few seconds and declare that they did nothing wrong. We saw that with the Ali Lewis case this past year, and we have seen it historically over and over and over. In fact, I challenge you to provide to us examples where that did not happen. Just reviewing my hand scribbled notes. Yeah, I'm gonna move on. What I had planned to comment about this evening relates to regular agenda item number two point A, an ordinance approving special use permit for the Montessori School of Champaign-Urbana for their proposal. I, in the distant past, was an instructor at the Montessori Schools in Montreal, and I listened with interest to the proposal and the presentation that was brought forth last week. I think the proposed location on Goose Alley is is actually quite ideal and is just a charming site for a downtown Urbana campus. I think because the location is tucked away away from main arteries, it creates a safety buffer zone for children who may have to leave, you know, walk a few steps from their parents' vehicles to the school. So that's, that's a plus. I think that my, my primary concern, and that's what prompts me to speak tonight, is that I didn't hear anything about including inclusivity and including financially marginalized members of the community. We know that the Montessori School tuition typically runs in the tens of thousands of dollars. I would like to hear the city, I would like to hear concern and effort put into creating special scholarships and financial support above and beyond what is already minimally offered by the schools, the Montessori School of Champaign-Urbana, to specifically to Urbana residents, to minorities, to single parents, to those with demonstrated financial need. And I think that concludes my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Brandy McCoy.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Hi, I'm Brandy McCoy, Urbana resident. I just wanted to speak tonight to encourage council members to approve the utility disconnection resolution with the verbiage about not requiring the the no means testing, or so requiring no means testing. But I just think that, you know, when people have to jump through hoops to get something that they need, it it just makes it more difficult. And as Alan stated earlier, you know, we've seen that happen. And I think that, you know, that's something that we definitely should, you know, try to learn from in any, you know, future endeavors. So I just wanted to voice my my hopes that the council will pass that. And with that, thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you. Next up is Christopher Hanson.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Christopher Hanson. I first wanted to mention something that was actually brought up in the township meeting, the Wood Street Community Garden Project, or RFP rather. At first, that was not very well advertised. I think the city could have done a better job at that. And maybe it wasn't well advertised because someone already had in mind who the, you know, the tenant was going to be. But the other thing I wanted to point out was that it sounds like there were two proposals submitted, and the RFP did say that the proposals were going to be open, read aloud to the public on March 22nd. I'm not sure that that ever happened, and I can't find through my best efforts any, any way to view those proposals that were submitted. It seems to me that the public might want to see those so that they can voice opinion about which one the city should accept. So I don't know if you're gonna actually do that, or if I need to send a FOIA request. I hate to send a FOIA request for something that's supposed to be a public document because then you guys are gonna villainize me for sending FOIA requests. So it'd be better if you guys just made it public. The next item is the CPRB change. Absolutely, you should strike that section out about criminal conviction. That's already a clear violation of our human rights ordinance. It shouldn't exist. As far as the mention of the FOP contract, we do have a human rights ordinance. I'm not aware that the FOP contract can somehow negate or violate or override our human rights ordinance. So our human rights ordinance predates the current FOP contract. So I really don't care what the contract says about criminal conviction. It's illegal to discriminate on that basis. So I don't think it matters. And you guys really, really only talked about section 1922C, which relates to felony conviction history, but I think you should also completely strike out section 1922B. And I know there was some talk about, you know, police officers serving on the board and stuff, but I mean, consider Mr. Allegrati who presented earlier today. I mean, he previously worked for the Public Defender's Office. So someone could argue that he's not allowed on the board because he has some prior affiliation with local law enforcement. And I think Mr. Allegrati is one of the most valuable members of that board. And you might have a state prosecutor who could serve on that board, and they might be a valuable member. And I'm going to actually disagree with almost everyone else who commented before me. I don't think there should be any statement at all about limiting who can be on the CPRB based on their prior employment, employment, and that includes someone who might have been employed as a police officer. Now, there may be a problem not with employment, but with affiliation. So if you had a Urbana police officer apply to be on the CPRB who was clearly friends with the people that he, you know, is going to be reviewing, that could be a problem. But suppose we had a, someone who was a sheriff or a police officer in a different state, happens to live in Urbana and wants to serve on the board. I don't really see a big issue with that. And if there is an issue, remember that that appointment is going to come before the city council for approval anyways. So I think you should just strike out both of those sections. So there's no, there's no indication of any type of discrimination at all. And I think that's all I have to say about that part. And then the last thing is the discussion on the public input rules. I just want to remind the city council members, you can speak about whatever you want to speak about. The mayor, the city attorney, they have no authority whatsoever to tell you that you can't talk about something that is currently related to ongoing litigation. You can say whatever you want. You can talk about closed sessions if you want. Your elected officials, there, no one has any power to tell you that you can't speak about something. I think the discussion on the speech restrictions last week was a joke. It was not an honest discussion. Jared Miller was the only one who was trying to actually have an honest discussion, and no one else wanted to hear. So, and this is what upsets the public, is when we see this over and over. And so I think the council is just not learning that what they're doing here over and over is the thing that's bringing them the, the language that they don't like. So, thanks.
Okay, I don't see any more hands. Does anyone else wish to address the council? Okay, we'll move on to council input and communications. Any council member comments? Jared?
Since we were just asking questions of the CPRB members, I just wanted to say, you know, that whatever you think about, you know, well, what if, what if this conviction, what if that conviction, the, you know, it's the same problem of trying to like put every situation in a, in a very particular box of like, you know, well, what if this person did this? They shouldn't be on the CPRB. What if this person did that? They shouldn't be on the CPRB. And, you know, there are so many other reasons that somebody can become unqualified, but it should never be because they had a felony conviction on its, on its own. That conviction should not be the reason why they don't, why they don't get on. In my, obviously, in my opinion. So if they did bring forward something to strike that language from there, I would, I would fully, fully support that. I think it would be valuable. I don't understand how that got into the language of the deforming ordinance in the first place, but I, I don't, I would definitely support their, their mission in removing it. And I hope everybody realizes why, why it shouldn't. It's just principally can't reject somebody based on solely on its own. There are so many other reasons and considerations you can take into consideration considering somebody. That shouldn't be the, the one thing like, oh, they got a felony conviction. Sorry, that's it. That's my comment. Thanks.
Thanks. Just to remind us all, and I need reminding as well, is this part three minutes per council member? For your rules?
I believe, I believe so.
Okay, all right. We'll keep time. Any, any other council member comments? Okay. Um, we'll move on and just, yes.
I just wanted to say something real quick because I missed last week's meeting. And regarding the, the presentation tonight too, is that I what I did not hear that some people were talking about was anybody actually recommending that there be a, a police officer on the CPRB. I believe that was brought up as a question as to if you, if, you know, if this, then what about some other group and so on and so forth. And I'd also like to say that I thought that Christopher brought up a point as far as affiliation regarding that, that whatever the, if, if you had been a officer someplace else, and this is something that you want to, you know, involve yourself in, then that should not, that should also not be an issue. I don't, I also don't believe that having a felony conviction should keep people off of the CPRB. I was asking just for some clarification regarding if there was any type of, you know, anything that, if there was a line that was going to be drawn or how they, the CPRB, in fact, how they were going to organize that particular ordinance or change in their, in the ordinance. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Any other council member comments? Okay, we'll move on. There are no additions to the agenda as far as I know, nor is there any unfinished business. We'll go next to reports of standing committees. Mary Alice.
All right, thank you. So all matters listed in the consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the city council and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call. Though there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by the mayor, council members, or a member of the public, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed immediately after approval of the remaining items on the consent agenda. So I guess I'll ask if anybody wants to remove something from the consent agenda. All right. Well, with that, on behalf of the committee, I would like to move approval of the consent agenda, which is Resolution Number 2021 04015R, Resolution approving the transfer volume cap in connection with private activity bond issues for single-family mortgage revenue bonds and related matters. This is the assist program for series 2021. Resolution Number 2021 04016R is for the same thing, only for IHDA series for 2021.
I'll second the motion.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jared. Any discussion? Oh, there is no discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sax?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
All right. On behalf of the committee, I move approval of ordinance number 2021 04013, an ordinance approving a special use permit at 121 Goose Alley, plain case 2416 SU16. It was brought to us by Norman Baxley and Montessori School of Champaign-Urbana.
I'd like to second that.
And I'd like to mention that we did receive an email a couple days ago regarding the parking spaces. And I don't know if somebody can shed some more light on that.
Yes, staff is here as well as I believe the applicants. We'll start with staff. Lori?
Thank you. I think the, the main concern that was expressed in the email was over the potential increase in the number of spaces that might be requested in the event there's an issue with how the, how the loading is planned to move, planned to work. So perhaps though, rather than me assuming I know the intent behind the email, it might be best to perhaps hear from either the sender or the applicant to make sure that I'm not mischaracterizing the concern, if that's okay. And then we would be happy to, to respond to that.
Absolutely. Why don't we start with the head of Montessori School?
This is Monica from the Montessori School. I spoke with Marcus this afternoon, and I think for the most part, we have it ironed out regarding the parking.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Norm Baxley, did you wish to speak as the property owner? Can you unmute, please?
I think Monica has, you know, spoken for me.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions from the council? Eric?
I'm curious to know what the, what the resolution was about this.
Who wants to address that?
Marcus.
So I spoke with Mr. Baxley this morning and
Marcus, could you speak up a bit? You're very faint.
Yes, let me see if I can turn my turn myself on. turn myself up. Is that any better?
Yes.
Okay. So, I spoke with Mr. Baxley this morning and Monica this afternoon, and I think there, that the concern was that that the condition for establishing a student loading parking zone was something that was going to be instituted, you know, immediately, or that there was some concerns about what would actually trigger that condition. So, I, I discussed with them that, you know, the, the plan is that the school would work with the parents and encourage them to park in the parking lot City One to drop off their student children and that they would not stop and park in Goose Alley to drop off or pick up their child. And if there is not any problems with traffic tying up in Goose Alley and causing conflict with other traffic or commercial traffic servicing the various restaurants and other establishments there along Goose Alley, that there would not be any reason to require establishment of a student loading zone. If there were issues with traffic conflict and those were brought to the city's attention, then the city would check into those allegations, if you will, or those complaints, determine their validity, and then work with the city engineer and the zoning administrator to determine what a good solution to that might be. It might be requiring two spaces, three spaces, four spaces to be set up for parent parking for picking up and dropping off students. So, I think letting the applicant and the owner know that this isn't something that the city would trigger without there actually being need to do that was enough to mitigate or dampen the concerns about that condition, as well as the fact as, you know, there was a little bit of concern about the potential cost to the school to have to rent, you know, 12 parking spaces, up to 12 parking spaces. And that discussion was, well, it wouldn't necessarily be 12 parking spaces. And we would like to, if that was required, work on part day spaces rather than full day spaces. And that really reduced the likelihood of high costs to the school. So, that I think is what reduced the concerns of the applicant and the owner.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Eric?
Yeah, mostly. It still seems a little vague, but I mean, when we say part day spaces, I mean, how long does it take to load and unload for school? I'd imagine a half hour tops because school starts, right? You know?
Yeah, this is Tim Cowan, Public Works Director. We talked about that, Eric, and I think the intent behind it is it's probably no more than an hour in the morning and an hour in the afternoon because a lot of these spaces, although parking is not used 24/7 in this lot, it is sold out after and very important during peak hours. So, we wouldn't intend to tell them they have to rent these spaces 24 hours a day. We would say, we would have some kind of prorated thing and then probably add signage to metered spaces that say no parking in these metered spaces, you know, 7:30 to 8:30 AM and 2:30 to 3:30 PM or whatever those hours may be. And we would charge them a prorated fee, which would be much less financially impactful to the school over a annual fee, i- if it, if it's ever needed.
And, and that is an important point. This is a contingency, so it's not that they'll start out doing this. Dennis, you were next, and then I think Bill Brown.
Yeah, I just thought it would be kind of useful to actually read the, the conditions which are in this special use permit request. So, I mean, so everybody knows exactly what's being asked for. So, I, I guess I'll, I'll read the ones that are pertinent. Number one, the parking and loading must be in a general conformance with the plan submitted. Two, this special use permit will expire on August 31st, 2024. The school may apply for another special use permit for this or another location as permitted in the Urbana zoning ordinance. Three, student enrollment is capped at 28 students. Now, actually, I had a question about the, the fact that this building, that this permit is capping the number of students to locate at this location. And I'm wondering if it's because of the square footage within the building or some other reason. Seems a little bit arbitrary, but you're saying no. Okay, so I'm going to continue reading and then maybe you can answer that question. The school must set rent at least three parking spaces within 450 feet of the school prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. So, that's required. If upon operation, it is determined by the city engineer that the school's pickup drop-off plan creates safety or traffic issues, the zoning administrator may require the school to secure up to 12 additional parking spaces to establish a student pickup and drop-off zone in a location determined by the city engineer or otherwise alter its pickup-drop-off plan to mitigate the issues. So, that's a contingency. The school, number five, the school must work with the property owner to install at least three bicycle loops on the property prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And the last, number six, the school must sign a waiver of its protective buffer from new retail license and renewals of the existing liquor licenses prior to the insurance of the certificate of occupancy. So, those are the details that are added to this document.
Thank you, Dennis. Bill Brown?
Um, yeah, I saw the original plan for drop-off that was part of the plan commission meeting. And for one thing, this is kind of a weird alley because it doesn't go all the way through. It ends at the parking lot there. So, I think the original plan just had them making a loop through the parking lot and basically dropping people off at the bottom of the U, at the end of the part, the loop in the parking lot. And then they would just walk, you know, whatever it is, 50 feet or 60 feet down the alley to get to class. And it seemed pretty efficient to me, at least for drop-off, without having to park. For pickup, I could see it being a little bit more of an issue if you might have to wait for your student. But for dropping somebody off, it just seemed like a pretty good plan. You wouldn't even have to enter the alley because you're actually in the parking lot. Was, and, and apparently with COVID and the use of the parking lot, that might not work. But in general, it seems like that's a good plan. And as opposed to parking and then backing up, it always bugs me a little bit to have to park and back up. It seems more dangerous to do that than it would just to stay with the flow and stay in the aisle and just drop people off. Was there some technical reason why that original plan couldn't be followed rather than have people park?
It was brought to planning's attention by public works staff that there is a city ordinance that prohibits parking, standing, stopping in an alley unless the vehicle is a service vehicle, a delivery vehicle, commercial vehicle, city vehicle, or some other sort of specialized exempt vehicle. So,
It's illegal to drop somebody off, to stop and drop somebody off in an alley that's considered standing, I guess. So, that would be prohibited. But since this isn't actually in the alley, apparently that's legal on the street. You can do that on the street, but not in the alley. And since this would actually be in the parking lot next to the alley, it seems like you could do that. And with it being at the very end of the alley, I don't know, there could be a special case. But if, you know, I'm just throwing ideas out there. I just think that for, for drop-off, that's a pretty good, it looks like a good plan to me. And I'm, I hope you, I, I think there are, you know, plenty of options to work with. So, I'm, I'm satisfied with the ordinance the way it is. If need be, when people leave school, if they want to meet somewhere, you know, these kids, a lot of them are going to be old enough where they could meet, get picked up at the library an hour after school or something like that. So, I think there are a lot of options. I, I don't think it'll be a big problem, but I'm glad that there is some recourse if, if it is a problem to work with the school and this public works to figure it out. Thanks.
And we had a question on the floor about the cap at 28 students. I, if I am not mistaken, that is set by the school, not the city or space needs. Is that correct?
That, that is correct.
Okay.
That was a self-placed cap to help assure the city, city staff, neighbors, that there weren't going to be 150 students here because it is a 3,300 square foot facility. And if, you know, solely relying on building code occupancy caps would allow a lot more children there than this 28 students.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
Mayor, I believe Mr. Baxley has his hand up.
Oh, I didn't see that. Thank you. His, his tile moved to the corner. Sorry, Mr. Baxley.
Okay.
Go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. Well, I have an observation. In the 35 years that Carolyn and I have been owning and renting properties in downtown Urbana, we've had a number of, of schools. We've had a ballet school. We've had for 15 years, a, a Kido dojo on the second floor of this building. Down the street, although not our tenant, is the C4A School for the Arts. All of these, and currently there's a dance studio upstairs at 120 West Main. All of these operations have had numerous children, dozens of children at a time, coming and going, being some picked up by their parents, some old enough that they walk, they ride the bus. But there's never been an issue, there's never been a question ever of loading zones and pickup and drop-off requirements for parking. And that's just an observation. I understand that these, these businesses and not-for-profits fell under the B for no parking requirement status and that there were not schools, officially schools. And that's, I understand, I appreciate that difference. The other observation I would make or a suggestion I would make falls under, more under the area of economic development. And I would suggest that in exchange for having the potential of a school in downtown Urbana, in a location that they seem to like very much, that would bring in students and their parents into downtown Urbana, who could eat in restaurants and shop in shops, that the city might actually provide a little incentive for them, rather than having what appears to me to be a rather punitive sounding, punitive reading, open-ended, or a potential for a requirement to rent 12 additional parking spaces without any specificity about how long they would need. They could be 24-hour spaces at $40 or $50 apiece. Or they could be an hour in the morning and an hour in the afternoon at, you know, 50 cents a day. That's not specified, but in the worst-case scenario, if I were a board member looking at this clause in a special use permit that you'd be, you'd be owning, that would lead me to think it's, you know, it's a little questionable. So, what's wrong with saying instead of, we may, at the discretion of a city official, require an additional 12 parking spaces to be rented, why not say, we would like to have you in downtown Urbana so badly that if a beer truck, a delivery truck complains that there's someone standing in Goose Alley to let their kid out or pick their kid up, why not say, we will provide you with a loading zone in exchange for bringing your business, bringing your school into downtown? The revenue potential from requiring 12 parking spaces, you know, I'm not sure what it would be, but is it worth it to the city in terms of just economics to, to have that open-ended, that requirement? That's my observation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further council comments? Questions? Dennis?
Certainly, that's a thoughtful thought. And right now, we deem that three spaces will be adequate. So, why don't we just drop any other consideration about what might be required for the future from this document and then deal with coming back to the city council to solve any issue that might arise in the future as separate and not in, encumber the document with words of a nature that are, is speculative for future, as if there was going to be a problem in the future. Right now, the required three spaces should be sufficient in amount to a loading zone. So, I recommend, I'd like to, I'd like to recommend a an amendment that we drop the additional text and leave it as three spaces and let the future decide if we need to adjust something and it can always come back to that.
I'll second that amendment.
So, that's a amendment to the original motion by Dennis, seconded by Bill Colbrook. Any discussion on that amendment?
Mary Alice says.
Mary Alice?
Um, so I guess my question is, is it's, from my experience with special use permits, we're not able to amend the special use permit conditions. Is, unless that, that is brought, if both parties are amenable to that. Lori, can you talk to about that?
Yes, and I was looking up to see if there's any trigger. I don't think there is any trigger for the city to say, thou must applicant, bring your special use permit back so that we can reconsider the conditions. I will check that. There might be something in nuisance code or something, but typically it would be the applicant would say, oh, I need something else. I need to come back for an amendment. I don't know of a trigger that the city could, you know, the city could switch to, to bring it back.
So, i- in that case, I guess I would, I'm, I'm, I mean, I, I understand Mr. Baxley's point and, and I agree. I think we want to encourage a variety of people coming down to, you know, the downtown Urbana. But I also think that we owe it to, you know, all the other businesses in the area that if there is an issue, that we have some mechanism for us to be able to go back to the school and say, hey, can we work together in doing this? It, it would seem to me that perhaps the biggest concern, and maybe Monica can talk about this, is the cost. The cost of renting 12 spaces. So, if, if that is the issue, maybe the amendment could address some of that.
Sure. In regards to the costs, I had a discussion with Marcus this afternoon. I just, I'm just trying to find out how much this is going to cost me so that I can present it to the board and so that the board can make a fair decision. I know the three parking spots that we were going to rent, it was going to be a little farther away. It was for the teachers. I, I understood that we cannot rent spots in that particular parking lot. So, I was just going to make the teachers walk. Those were a little bit more expensive and I understand, you know. Those were a little bit more expensive and I understand, you know, teachers aren't always going to work during normal business hours. So I understand that they needed the three spots twenty-four seven, wherever I can get them and, you know, they'll park there. For the loading zone one, the way Marcus explained it, it made sense. Although I will say right now, our school, we do the kind of roundabout drop off. I have thirty kids dropped off and picked up in less than twenty minutes' time, and this is for kids two, all the way up to fourteen. And little toddlers carrying their book bags and all of those things, they walk in unassisted. And I can get, I can get that done in less than twenty minutes' time. So.
Bill Colbrook?
I'll just repeat my comments from last council meeting. I just think this is just such a non-issue. I'm downtown all the time. I was downtown, I believe it was Sunday morning for breakfast. And there was a restaurant, it was absolutely packed. People were everywhere, but in the restaurant. And outside, there was no issue with the number of students that will eventually be at the school, not on year one, but on year three. And with the ability of the traffic pattern. So I'm going to, I'm going to agree in significant part with Mr. Baxley on his comments. There, there's all kinds of different activities that go on downtown. And, you know, I think the the casual observer would even notice, you know, the drop offs and pickups and stuff. I just don't think that the school downtown, at that location, is going to create such a significant bottleneck of traffic that we're going to even discuss this at all. I just really think it's a non-issue.
Okay, we have a motion for an amendment for striking the second sentence in section one, number four. And that's related to the requirement of up to twelve additional parking spaces or otherwise altering the pickup and drop off plan. Is there any other discussion on that amendment? Mary or Lori?
I thought I might be able to offer a bit of a compromise. What if we took out the potential for the twelve spaces but left in the last part or otherwise alter its pickup, drop off plan to mitigate the issues? Because that what the earlier condition does require them to follow the plan. So if there is a need to alter the plan, it would be best if we could do that immediately, just through negotiation with the school, rather than necessarily coming through a whole process in order to to alter the pickup, drop off plan. So just wanted to offer that as a potential option.
So that, if that were the case, it would read, if upon operation, it's determined by the city engineer that the school's pickup, drop off plan creates safety or traffic issues, the zoning administrator may require the school to alter its pickup, drop off plan to mitigate the issues?
That is what I'm suggesting. Thank you.
That acceptable to you, Dennis?
Yeah, that's a better com- that's a better solution. It leaves everything open, but it's not, it's not prejudicial against the school.
I think it may satisfy the safety concerns as well as provide flexibility for dealing with the the small chance that problems develop in the future.
As a second, I agree as well.
Okay. All right. Eric, you had comment on this one?
Yeah, I think we really want the school there. I think by the change that we're just discussing, we still leave a certain degree of uncertainty as to how it would get resolved if there was a problem or the city found that it wanted to change. And that might be a concern to the board of the school. So considering how low risk this is and the advantages of it, why not just put in there that if there is a problem, the city will make at no cost a twelve spot, up to twelve spot loading zone for the duration of this permit, which is relatively short anyway? And and just give the the school board some certainty in this.
I think the certainty is the fact that we will work with the school to negotiate or to to work out a resolution to any issues that would arise. But any other comments? Mary Alice?
I just want to say that this is only for three years. So the first year, they're not going to have very many students there. So I expect no problems for the first year. And then they'll slowly increase it. And and Diane was reelected for four years, and so it will happen during her term. So we don't have to worry about a different group of people coming in, putting all different stipulations. So I'm fine with with Lori's suggestion. I think that that will give the school the flexibility. I think the administration is is willing to work with the school to make it work for both the city and the school. And so I think we should just keep the language that that Lori has proposed.
Okay, are we ready to vote on this?
Mayor, before we vote, can you please restate the motion again?
Yes, we have the motion to amend section one, item four to read, and this would be the second sentence. If upon operation, it's determined by the city engineer that the school's pickup slash drop off plan creates safety or traffic issues, the zoning administrator may require the school to alter its pickup, drop off plan to mitigate the issues. Everything else stays the same.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Could we have a roll call vote on that amendment?
Yes. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. And then we have the main motion for ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero four dash zero one three as amended. Could the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sacks?
Yeah, yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. Next item.
The next item up on the agenda is ordinance number twenty twenty-one zero four zero one four, an ordinance amending city code chapter two, section two hyphen five, electronic virtual public meetings for public input during a virtual meeting. On behalf of the committee, I move approval.
I'll second the motion.
With by Mary Alice, seconded by Jared. Any comments, discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Last item, oh, go ahead, Mary Alice, sorry.
All right. On behalf of the committee, I move approval for resolution number twenty twenty-one zero four zero one seven R, resolution declaring continued utility disconnections in Illinois to be a pandemic safety risk.
All right, there was language that was updated in section three.
Excuse me, can we get a second, please?
I'm sorry. I will second the motion.
Will you like the second? Okay. Okay, go ahead.
So we updated language in section three and section five, following council concerns about expanding some information that was about the information in the act in section three and took out some of the language in five and clarified about means testing and its importance in the resolution. Hopefully, both of those changes were satisfactory to everyone. And if it wasn't clear, I know upon rereading some of the language about the H B two eight seven seven utilities are not specifically mentioned in the ordinance, but they are a direct part of the federal emergency rental assistance program, the emergency rental assistance program being administered through the CARES Act, which is what the bill is to enact. So even though this is said specifically in there, utilities are a part of the relief that's provided for in that. It's not really directly mentioned in the most of the stuff that you'll read about that legislation. So I just wanted to clarify that for anyone in case there was confusion. But hopefully those, both of those clarifications will find support and happy for any questions.
Mary Alice?
Thanks for updating the information, Jared. I did have a question on section five. I don't quite understand the last sentence. So the last sentence says, the moratorium should be without means tested as means tested moratoria have allowed for thousands of household disconnections. I understand that part. This is the part I don't understand. While a non-means tested moratorium on power disconnections resulted in only four households disconnections over a period of three months. Is the intent to say while a means tested moratorium and not a non-means tested moratorium?
Uh, you mean for the last sentence?
Yeah.
Well, so the last, yeah, I guess I can see that that would be a little bit confusing. So the first one, where there were still over ten thousand shut offs during that first, those first few, those had means testing. And the last one that the sentence is referring to, it did not have means testing. There's no means testing. Does that make sense?
Yes, over a period of three months. So in which case, I guess I I am still, so we I thought that the current rules for utility disconnection were that if you declared that you had an issue of payment due to COVID-related items that you didn't have to, that you, that they couldn't shut you off. I thought that was the current kind of what was going on with utility companies. So if that's the case, does that mean that only four households had disconnections during those three months? And is this the state of Illinois?
Correct. Yeah, this this has to do with statewide utilities. So I, now I'm confused by what you're, by what you're, by what you're confused about.
Okay, all right. So I'm confused because it, from the non-means test, meaning it doesn't matter how much money you have, right? That's what non-means tested means. In what cases did that happen in the state of Illinois? Because on the one sense, we have, you know, ten, thousands of households with disconnection. So were there two different programs?
There were, there were two different kinds of moratorium that were issued. Yes, they're not, they're not the same.
So are we talking about the the COVID statement to utilities, saying that if you had, if you had issues with non-payment because of COVID related? Is that, is that what this is referring to?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, all right. So I guess my only thing I would say, moratorium should be without means tested as a means tested moratorium have allowed for thousands of household disconnections in the state of Illinois. I guess I would throw that in there. While a second non-means tested moratorium on power disconnections resulted in only four houses.
Yeah, I mean, it could say difference or, I mean, the should be without means, non-means tested.
Right.
You know, that's, that's, that's the big point. The big point is that you shouldn't be putting all of the, you know, you must qualify under X, Y, and Z requirements and prove them to us restrictions or allow utilities to still ask for those things in order to qualify someone that shouldn't have those things in there. Because when they did do it, there were still thousands and thousands of disconnections. They didn't, there were not. It was much easier for people here.
Bill Colbrook, you had a comment?
Yeah, I have a, I have a problem with section five as well, that last sentence. But the first part gives no time period. But then the second part gives a three-month time period. So I don't think that you can equate the number on the first half of the sentence with the number on the second because there is no consistency on time period because time period, what they mentioned in the first part of the sentence. And second of all, since there is so much, I think there's a cause and effect that has attempted to be drawn here. I'm not going to dispute the numbers that there was thousands in this instance, and there was four instances. I'll, I'll, you know, agree that that somebody's done the research and and those numbers are what they are. But what nobody has done is say that there's a direct causal effect. I think there's an insinuation that there is, but you know, there's been no proof of why the numbers are what they are. I think section five is strong enough with the first sentence and only the first sentence. I agree that the governor should should have called for a moratorium on utility disconnections a long time ago. I would be in support of that. I think the second sentence just muddles up the whole issue.
Fair points in, you know, I think the I think the means testing is still language I would prefer to be included in that section, Bill, just because, you know, even if I guess it's not demonstrated to you in this, I've seen enough that, you know, I don't know, if you have it in, they don't happen, and you do, and they, and they do happen, as in to say, you know, if if there is means testing and there are tons of shut offs still happening and then there is not means testing and there are very few, that seems.
I mean, I understand, but this, this document was done in an academic research theme and philosophy with with the references and stuff. And in academia, you know, you know, and enough of us know about that, that if you make strong assertions, there has to be strong backup. There's got to be a strong reference to it. And there's not a strong reference of the cause and effect. There's an insinuation, but that's all.
Dennis?
So here's what I think. The first sentence is fine in section five. And then I would say the moratorium should be without means testing, period. Don't go into explaining why you think that's true. You don't need to do that. Just state your preference that you would rather have the moratorium not involved with means testing. And just say that. The moratorium should be without means testing, period. And skip the rest. Because, you know, it's really just a justification of why you want to have something done. But really, what we want to say is it should be this way. Because I think it does become confusing. Because who cares about, yeah, I mean, there is, we do care about it, but we have a preference and we're just going to state the preference.
I'd support that, Dennis. I think that's a good, good way to go.
Do, Bill?
Yeah, I'd support the, I think any kind of means testing will probably come later when they try to sell the bill. Because a moratorium is just a pause. So eventually, most people are going to have to pay their bill, but maybe there will be additional funding at some point that will, you know, allow some people not to pay their bill if they don't have the means. So I think that would come later. So I think saying what Dennis said would be good. The other thing I just wanted to thank Alan for is kind of getting this to talk about this. We, people bring us stuff, you know, to pass or to pass a resolution on that has no legal effect, but just kind of support things. But it's been an interesting discussion. All the utility shut off thing. One thing I learned that we can apply locally or some future council can apply locally, maybe, is how, when we had the discussion about the sanitary billing, you know, a lot of our stuff is billed on the sanitary bill besides our part of the sanitary bill. We also put our recycling tax on there and we put our stormwater fee on there. So that adds up. It's like an extra twenty, fifteen to twenty dollars a month for those two. So every bill billing period, it's substantial. And what I didn't realize before was that sanitary bill during normal times can be collected by the water company or they have some kind of agreement with the water company. So failure to pay that sanitary bill can also result in water shut offs. I think that's something that you should keep and keep, be, keep in mind in the future when you think about raising the stormwater fee or the recycling tax and maybe even how it's billed and how it's collected. I know for a long time, we did that ourselves and did it individually, and it made sense to do it this way, but maybe that's something that people should think about in the future on how that part of the bill is collected.
Interesting point. Interesting point. Well, is someone willing to offer a motion to amend section five? The way you discussed, which would be to end the section five at, uh, "The city of Urbana calls on the Illinois governor to enact a thirty-day mandatory moratorium on utility disconnections for non-payment, payment. The moratorium should be without means testing," period.
Yes, I'd like to make that motion since I suggested it.
And I'll second that.
Okay, so that's made by Dennis, seconded by Mary Alice. Further discussion on that amendment. Okay, will the clerk please call the roll on the amendment? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. And then could we have a roll call vote on the main motion for the resolution as amended? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, and thanks everyone for the support.
Thank you. That motion passes. Okay, that is it for the committee report. Do we have any reports from special committees? Okay, um, next up is reports of officers. I, I asked our, and we got queries from a couple council members to have an update on the, uh, recent shootings that occurred in the city of Urbana and actually across our community as a whole. So Chief Seraphin.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I, I believe some press releases went out. I'm going to refer to a, a couple of those, and then I have a, a little extra information to add to each one. So, uh, bear with me if you've heard some of this information, is the, as the mayor has already said, uh, there were two rather severe shootings in Urbana over the weekend, one on Friday night and one on Sunday afternoon. Uh, there was another, uh, local shooting as well, I guess overnight Saturday or very early Sunday morning. First of all, the one, there was a, an incident on Friday night, April ninth, at about eight twenty PM out in the Prairie Green complex. Um, at that point, and that's out of the twenty-five-hundred block of East Washington. Officers were sent to reports of shots fired. When they arrived, they located dozens of casings, uh, as well as multiple bullet strikes in the parking lot area on cars and on the buildings. Officers searched that area where they found one deceased male, thirty-four-year-old Eric Kirk, um, who had, was discovered to have one gunshot wound to his head. The officers responded to, uh, that and, um, conducted CPR, um, but, uh, unfortunately, the, the man did die. That was on Friday night. Sunday afternoon, we had another shooting, uh, in the eleven-hundred block of South Weber Street. In that particular event, uh, it was about four-thirty in the afternoon. Again, officers dispatched to multiple reports of shots fired, where a forty-six-year-old local man was found in the front yard of a, uh, a house there. That man too had one bullet wound to his head. That man is still alive, um, but is in, um, uh, life-threatening, uh, intensive care condition right now. In that particular event, um, the, uh, the man was, uh, simply, um, in, in the front yard area was actually walking a dog, uh, for a friend. In that event as well, there was a, a silver sedan that was seen leaving, uh, the area shortly after, afterwards. And I think that information is, and is pushed out to the press as well. In the first event, one of the things that I mentioned, and we have some of these discussions in different community meetings, is the increase in the number of shots that have been fired. In the event, there were, uh, the first one of that Friday night, there were over sixty casings recovered at the scene. Six, zero. There were multiple calibers of casings that were recovered. Um, and that is what makes this so extremely concerning. And while each event, uh, the, the, the information we've collected so far, leads to, uh, a theory of intentionality in both events, they weren't simply random. I, I say that simply, uh, to, to let everyone know. But it's not, and it's clearly not to undermine any safety concerns, however. When there are sixty casings, that means sixty projectiles were going one direction or another in that particular, um, uh, complex on, on Friday. The, the event on Sunday afternoon was much, much, um, smaller, and I don't have an exact number in front of me here with regards to the number of casings there. So those two events, coupled with the event, uh, the other local event, Saturday night, I, I just wanted to make sure that, that these are the kind of events that are, that do use a lot of resources. And we've had Urbana Patrol officers start the event, start the investigation, and Urbana detectives. Uh, we had Illinois State Police Crime Scene technicians out on Friday night. We've had the Champaign County Coroner's Office we've worked with. We've worked with the local street crimes task force on this event and utilized their resources to help us locate people. We've had investigators from the county sheriff's office, detectives from Champaign assist. So, um, we've had a lot of, uh, a lot of effort put forth, and we will continue, uh, our, our investigations, um, as we move forward. And I spent most of my day on this as well. So, um, that's the, the, I guess, the, the quick update for council. If you have any questions, I will attempt to answer them.
Any questions, Dennis?
Um, I don't know if you can share this or not, but did, did the victim in the first instance also have a gun on his possession?
Uh, I won't go into those particulars, I guess, I guess, right now. Um, uh, sorry, Mr. Roberts.
It's fine. Thanks. Just thought I'd ponder.
Understood.
Mary Alice?
Um, it doesn't sound like it, but I wanted to ask if there is any indication that these incidents were related to one another?
Um, we have no evidence to support, uh, any theory that these two are related at all to each other.
Chief, could you give the phone numbers? At, at this point, you're still in the early stages of the investigations. Are there phone numbers that the public can call if they have any information that they can share?
Absolutely. Um, the, the main number here is three-eight or two-one-seven. I guess now we have to dial two-one-seven-three-eight-four-twenty-three-twenty-three-eight-four-twenty-three-twenty, or, um, Crime Stoppers is also available, two-one-seven-three-eight-four-tips, T-I-P-S. Correction, three-seven-three-tips, T-I-P-S, three-seven-three-T-I-P-S. And there's also a website, and that Champaign County Crime Stoppers also takes texting and whatnot as well. Ms. Hershey, I thought I saw your hand.
I just wanted to know if you had any leads at all, as, as to what, um, could have caused either of these shootings?
Uh, I, I generically can say yes. The detectives have, uh, things they're following up on, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, chief, I'm, um, I'm concerned how your officers are doing, uh, because you, you had mentioned it, but I just don't want it to be glossed over by the public or the council. Uh, your officers responded, uh, noticed that the victim had a gunshot wound to the head, and they performed CPR. That's, that's very dramatic. It's a very dramatic, um, occurrence in anybody's life, uh, let alone an officer who is experienced and perhaps has done that before. Uh, these things, they chip away. They, um, they absolutely make an impression, and I'm concerned about how, um, not only the officers that showed up to that scene, uh, but the officers who showed up at the other scene, and just in general, the officer, um, how, how they're holding up, uh, as they go about their daily duties. So, um, tha- uh, thank you for the question. It, it's always something we need to be aware of. It's always something that, uh, we, we, we'll, we talk about, especially as the teams afterwards will discuss. This is, um, the, the team that's working this weekend worked, they would work due to our twelve-hour shift plan. They work Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So the team that was working on Friday nights, the same team that was working on Sunday night. The detectives came out, they worked all night to Friday night, overnight in the hour, in the early morning hours, come back, sleep quickly, come back on Saturday. And it'd sort of be able to put a pin in it until they get called back out for a second one on, on, on Sunday. Um, so, right now, I, I, I believe they're tired, um, but, uh, that's one of the things our supervisors have to do as well when we're supervising teams and having overseen our detectives for nine years. I do understand that it's, you, you're juggling a lot of things. So, right now, uh, we, we believe everyone, although tired, is, is, is doing okay.
Any other questions for the chief?
I, I would just add, I've been in, in touch with, um, a number of people, including the community coalition, Mayor Finan in Champaign. And what's very important for us all to know and to, to understand is that this is a community-wide problem. In fact, it's a nationwide problem. There's the, just being in contact with mayors around the country. There's an increase in gun violence across the nation in the state of Illinois, and as we've seen here in Champaign-Urbana. And, um, it's, it's, it's something that we have to tackle as a community, and what makes it especially, uh, what, what makes it different, and, and I've been involved in efforts addressing gun violence since almost the, when I got on the city council, is, is while these are mostly not random events, the unpredictability of these events is horrific because of the number of, you know, the nature of them. And when you're, you know, a gunfight in a parking lot or shooting up a house, it's, it's not just one target. It could be sixty different targets. It could be, um, all the people in the house, and it, and it is. So the, the type of event has changed over the, over the past few years, and that's, that's what makes it especially challenged, but, but challenging. But we will be tackling this as a community. Um, but again, if people have information they can share, it's two-one-seven-three-eight-four-twenty-three-twenty. We cannot solve this without help. And two-one-seven-three-seven-three-T-I-P-S. I did have one other thing I wanted to, um, report, and it's, it's on a positive note, and that is the, project that we, many of us, some of us participated in on Saturday, and it was a, a house building with Habitat for Humanity. This was sponsored by Savoy United Methodist Church, but City of Urbana employees volunteered for both shifts on Saturday morning and Saturday afternoon to raise the walls in this, in this home. So we had, um, volunteers from Urbana Police Department, Urbana Fire Department, Public Works Department, Urbana Free Library, Executive Department, and then, um, a few other folks. And it was a tremendous experience. I just want to thank everyone who volunteered and those who organized it. And this is, I think we have over fifty-five Habitat for Humanity houses now built in Urbana, and it's a tremendous partnership that we've had over the years. So this is a project at twelve-eleven, um, Ead Street, and it's, it's, um, it was just a very, uh, rewarding experience. And it, it changes people's lives, and that's, that gives, gives us a lot of hope. So thanks again for all the volunteers. And, um, the, the, uh, effort was, was led by Chief Seraphin. So, in terms of getting the city volunteers, so I thank you for that. Um, last item on the agenda is new business and its resolution twenty-two-one-dash-zero-four-dash-oh-one-eight-R. That's a resolution of protest against a proposed zoning map amendment to the Champaign County zoning ordinance. Cat Trotter, are you taking the lead on this?
Yes, I am. And I've got a short presentation for you all. Um, this is a request by Ryan and Amanda Donaldson to amend the zoning map for thirty-eight oh-four North Cunningham Avenue from County Ag Two Agriculture to County B Four General Business to allow them to establish and operate the Illinois Fire Service LLC. Um, at the March eleventh, twenty-twenty-one CCZBA meeting, the Champaign County Zoning Board of Appeals voted unanimously to enact rezoning with one special condition. Um, and at the March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one meeting, the Urbana Plant Commission voted unanimously to forward this case to the city council with a recommendation to defeat a resolution of protest as presented. Um, this is a zoning map that was prepared by Champaign County Planning and Zoning. Um, the property is located on Cunningham Avenue. It is a seven-point-zero-five acre tract of land, uh, about four-point-two, or, I'm sorry, zero-point-four-two miles north of the Urbana city limits within the one-point-five-mile ETJ. Uh, the city should examine the proposed rezoning to ensure compatibility with existing city ordinances. Uh, the petitioners would like to construct two buildings on the property. The first fa- or the first building, phase one, will house the Illinois Fire Service LLC, and the second building would have an office and warehouse space for another construction-like company. A special use permit has also been applied for to allow multiple principal buildings on the same lot in the proposed B Four zoning district. This is a zoning map of the property. The lot was formerly a farmstead, and all but one of the farmstead buildings have been demolished. And per CCPZD, uh, the proposed use is most similar to contractor's facility with no outdoor storage or operations, uh, which is permitted by right in the County B Four zoning district. There are adjacent commercial and residential uses to the south and west along Cunningham Avenue, and there are agricultural uses to the north and west. This is the county zoning map. Um, and the property is currently zoned County Ag Two and would be rezoned to County B Four. The two thousand and five comprehensive plan and future land use map designates the area for agricultural use. However, the property is on Cunningham Avenue and the US forty-five North corridor characterized by commercial uses. Staff finds that the rezoning and County B Four General Business District would be generally consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. This is a proposed site plan showing the phase-one and phase-two buildings, as well as the detention pond on the property. Uh, to summarize, Plan Commission and staff found that the application meets the evaluation criteria for the requested rezoning map, or I'm sorry, zoning map amendment, and the proposed B Four designation is consistent with zoning and land use pattern in the vicinity of the site. The city council has the following options in the CCZBA case, and this is a little strange, so I've written it out, um, in as clear a way as possible. So the following options are to vote no to protest and to require a supermajority vote at the county board to rezone the property, or to vote yes to not protest and to require a simple majority at the county board to rezone the property. And here are the recommendations from the CCZBA as well as, uh, the Urbana Plant Commission, both of which recommended to defeat a, uh, resolution of protest, and staff concurs. So here are the options again, just to help for clarity.
Well, actu- actually, that's the opposite of what they would do if they moved the resolution as presented.
Um, and I, I'll ask Lori to step in on this, but we, um, wrote the ordinance in a way that, um, I believe if, here, Lori, I'll bring it up again, sorry.
Uh, the ordinance is written as though, uh, if you vote yes, it would approve a protest. Excuse me, did I say that right? The ordinance is written so that if you vote yes, you, the city would protest. So yes, correct. Sorry.
I'll just ignore what's on the screen there, and we'll.
We tried so hard to get it right this time. I'm sorry.
Every time we do this, it's confusing. So let's start with any technical questions for Cat, and then we'll get the motion going. Mary Alice.
Um, so Cat, can you throw up the site plans real quickly?
Yeah, for sure.
So one of the things I was looking in, in the red here, it says septic field. So I'm assuming they're not planning on connecting to the sewer. Is that correct?
Correct. They will be installing a new septic system, which will be located, I believe it's over a hundred feet from the deto- detention pond and over a hundred feet from the field tile that they plan to install as well.
Okay, was it cost prohibitive for them to hook up to our sanitary sewer?
Yeah, and they're not required to, um, and had they wanted to, um.
They would have to annex.
Exactly.
Right, right. Okay, all right, thank you.
Bill Brown, you had a question?
Um, yeah, what is it they do?
Um, yeah, what is it they do? Says it's like a contractor. So is it they make equipment or they do training or?
That's a great question. I believe they're more equipment driven. Yeah, that's I don't really have the specifics on the on the business operations. But the County Planning and Zoning Department had written. The report in a way that it was phrased as under a contractor's use.
It's my understanding just from. Dealing with them on construction projects that they would go in and they'd design like a sprinkler system. And all of the equipment that is associated with that.
Okay, and then. So changing this zoning would allow other uses. Besides this, if they if they decided, if they went out of business and they decide to sell the business, somebody could use could. Compare it to any before use, hey?
Yes, and that's kind of the object of the phase two building as well to allow other contractor services or contractor like services to be on the same property.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Reese and then Eric.
Yeah, I I I kind of have the same the same question that Bill had, Lori. So you said that they. So we're. Rezoning. I'm just trying to understand the.
The county. So remember, this is in the county. So the county is request, well, the applicants are requesting the county rezone. The property in order to allow this use to be in a different zoning district.
So does the county know what they do?
Yeah, so our role is to determine if this zoning is in conflict and would harm the city of Urbana in any way. While the county's role is to go through all of the LAFAL criteria to ensure that this rezoning is appropriate.
Okay, so my another question in that that I have because you're talking about a detention pond. What what is that used for? Can anybody give me a? Like, is that where? Yeah, but is it going to be like water spill off from their manufacturing something like put?
No, it's the impervious surface that they have.
Okay.
So like all of our developments today, unless you're already built out a hundred percent, requires some sort of detention or another way to deal with your stormwater.
Okay, since they're not, since they're not being hooked up to the Urbana sewage.
Well, those are separate systems, but. Okay, yes.
I'm just trying to get understanding. Okay.
Phil Colbrook?
I guess in plain speak is the city is the recommendation to support this development or to fight the development?
In plain speak, we are in support of the rezoning.
Eric.
And and why do we support conversion of valuable farmland into. Business use when these buildings could be put in a more urban area? Why the sprawl?
Well, in this case in particular, there are other commercial and residential more developed uses around this particular piece of farmland. And also something that we took into consideration when staff was looking at the criteria was that it is on the Cunningham Avenue. Commercial corridor and the US forty five corridor, which in Urbana is also characterized by commercial uses.
So what's the plan for converting all? I mean, what is the long term plan? Are they planning to take out all that farmland along forty five and and make it business?
I think this property in in particular, because it is adjacent to Cunningham Avenue itself, is different from. Other farmland in the vicinity further off of Cunningham Avenue and the commercial corridor and like uses. I can't speak for the county, but I think that was staff's perspective when weighing the criteria and looking at how this will influence future development.
Bill Brown, did you have a comment? Question?
I was gonna make a motion and I'd like to make it to. Support the resolution of protest that I planned about. No, I think that's the way that. This was kind of intended because it was intended as a safety measure for cities. So that by default, we propose a resolution of protest. So I I just think that's the way that it was intended. Sometimes we've kind of changed it and said, let's move to defeat it. So I'm just gonna.
Yes, please, please move as written on the agenda.
Move to approve the resolution number twenty twenty one oh four oh one eight R resolution of protest.
I'll second.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Jared. And just to make sure everyone is clear. If you vote yes, you are voting to support the protest. If you vote no, you're voting to defeat the protest and the recommendation from the Plan Commission or from the. Which commission for?
Yes, the Plant Commission.
Plant Commission was to defeat the resolution of protest. So you want to, that would be a no vote.
Then I'll just, I'll say I'm planning on voting no. I think. I I think it's true that it's unfortunate to see a lot of farmland converted, but this is frontage on a main highway. Seems like a highest and best use. I'd rather see it in town where it's easier for employees to get to if they don't have cars. But I think if we didn't approve it, they'd find someplace else to go and it wouldn't be moving into town anyway. So it's better to have it close to town than not at all.
Any other comments? Jared?
I also just want to say, Eric, for your references, a. Small business manager, I have been, I'm facing this exact same situation with the company I manage. Trying to find somewhere to go. We were expiring a lease where we where we were at. And sometimes, even though I, you know, I understand the environmental impact of developing farmland. Or anywhere that is undeveloped, finding a place to go in town, especially in Champagne, Urbana, is extremely expensive. It's very difficult and sometimes developing in a rural place in a periphery, it's like really the only good business option that you have. So, you know, I I think most people would prefer to be in town. I know I certainly, you know, our operations would benefit greatly from being in town because we, most of our work occurs in town. But we may find ourselves in a situation where it's just unaffordable and it's easier to develop new and buy land in the county than it is to. Develop in town. So that can often be a business decision that somebody's making too. This perspective.
Any other council comments? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
No.
Mr. Sax?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Colbrook?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No.
That motion passes.
Well, motion fails.
I'm sorry, that motion fails. Force of habit. That motion was defeated. The resolution of protest was defeated. Thank God, we don't do these very often. With no further business before this council, we will stand adjourned. Thank you very much.